It is now seven forty-two PM. This is a regular city commission meeting of the City of West Miami. This is Wednesday, June first, two thousand and twenty-two. Call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can we get an invocation? I think Madam, Madam, the manager's gonna, yeah, please.
Thank you. Please rise and let's bow our heads this evening. Eternal God, we pray that you bless us in this meeting and keep us. Lord, make your face shine on us and be gracious to us. I pray so that we feel your presence during this meeting because you are with us wherever we go. We pray that this meeting focuses on good outcomes for our city residents and those who labor to make a positive difference in our community. Tonight, we dedicate our prayers to all those who are suffering from the senseless and tragic massacre which occurred in Uvalde, Texas shy of one week ago, which resulted in the loss of life of, of, for nineteen young children and two teachers. We pray for their souls. We pray for those children who survived as they will carry this traumatic experience with them for the rest of their lives. Lord, help us stay grounded and help us understand your will. God, please shine your light upon all of our law enforcement officers, military personnel, and firefighters. And in, as a sign of respect, I request that we pause for twenty-one seconds honoring and respecting the lives lost in silence. We know that heaven just gained twenty-one angels.
Please stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I declare the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, please, uh, roll call.
Yes, item three, roll call. Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan Blanes is excused this evening. Commissioner Candy de Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Ivan Chavez Jr.
Here.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular commission meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Item five, public comments. None this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Next item.
Item six, report of a city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've submitted a written report. I'll go through it briefly. The, my report for this meeting includes the following items. As expected, the property appraiser delivered the June first, two thousand and twenty real estate project estimated property assessment values, which turn into revenues that we depend on for the City of West Miami for next budget year. We, as of today, we have a better understanding on how the budget will start to look at in terms of revenues and expenses. We have agreed to meet with the mayor tomorrow morning to discuss millage rates. Please refer to the property appraiser's letter inviting cities to reduce millage due to the increase in assessment and the overall benefits to our projected tax rules and the current situation that is affecting so many families in Miami-Dade County. The next item is the financial disclosures, statements of financial disclosure, of financial interest known as Form One have been sent out by the supervisor of elections. Please check your city mail or your personal mail and complete the form before the due date. You may return it to my assistant, Kari, and she will email it or send it US mail on your behalf. The due date for this is July first. Since the clerk will be out on vacation, I'll be happy to accept those on her behalf. The next item is West Miami Police Department vehicle accident. A West Miami police officer was rear-ended last night at approximately ten-thirty PM. Officer Kevin Espinoza was not injured, thankfully. The other driver was at fault. We have submitted all the paperwork to the league as customary. The driver of the other vehicle is insured and the cruiser is already at the body shop waiting for the adjuster, and this is a multi-car accident. The next item is the Fourth of July. Just a brief summary of our progress. In keeping with the request by the committee at the last meeting, the city has sent out sponsorship invitation letters, and we have secured the vendor that will be providing the carnival services. Emails have been sent on the progress to the mayor and city commissioners as we move along. We are in contact with Greater Miami Catering Services, and we are waiting to hear back from them on the food donation request. I will be working with Chairman Chavez, Commissioner Chavez, before the next meeting to make sure that we provide as much information to the committee as it is possible. And the next item is watching the tropics. We are watching the tropics, and as customary, we will be in contact with the mayor and city commission on updates or if there's something that we feel that you need to be made aware of. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to take those.
Does anybody have any questions for the manager?
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. Next item.
Item seven, report of city attorney.
No report.
Item eight, report of city engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Would you like to, just, uh, out of time-saving, would you like to report on your two reports, E and F, now?
That's fine with me, if it's fine.
Yeah, let's just, let's just take them out of order because that way, they were both reports anyways, so go ahead.
Yeah, I included them in, in the, in the, the engineer's report, so that's fine. So for the benefit of our new commissioner too, I left a lot of the history in here. So, um, you know, you have a lot of background on, on some of the projects. I'll briefly go over that and go over the status. We do like to do this about once a quarter where we just kind of go over the general status of all the projects, of what we have in the pipeline, what we have starting. The biggest projects, of course, are our potable water main improvement projects. So just brief history, uh, you know, most of the city is comprised of very old cast-iron mains. In two thousand and sixteen, we, we started a, um, a, uh, citywide master plan for water main improvements, which basically mapped out the entire system. We identified areas of not only improvement for, uh, old and dilapidated pipes, but actually upsizing for capacity and all that. So that study was completed, and since then, we've used that study very successfully to get grants and begin implementing our plan. And most recently, we just finished Phase One A of the project, which was the initial appropriation that we got. And that was basically for roughly generally Fifty-Eighth Avenue corridor and some of the side streets. We're currently working on Phase One B, which is generally Fifty-Ninth Avenue and some of the side streets kind of interconnecting the projects. That project is currently, we're, we're complete with design. We're about ninety percent complete. Design's done. We're going to move into permitting now, and we should be ready to, to go to bid at some point this, this month or next month. We'll be working on the bid package and hopefully be coming to you soon with a, with a package to get ready to put out the bid. And as soon as we're done with that, you know, we'll hopefully start procurement, like I said, this month or next, probably next month with advertising and everything, we'll probably put it out in July. And then that will have a starting construction sometime in, in late summer, early fall. And that project has a, more or less about a six-month construction time. So early twenty-twenty-three, we should be done there. And then we'll be moving forward into Phase Two. Phase Two is also commenced design, so we're in the middle of designing that as well. So as soon as we get Phase One A out, we'll continue on with the design efforts on Phase Two. For Phase Two, we're looking to have design complete and have a package ready for procurement by roughly November of this year. That'll put us to start construction about twen-, early two thousand and twenty-three. Hopefully, the projects will work out where we kind of dovetail in. As we finish One B, we just keep rolling with, with Phase Two. Phase Two is the big project right now. That's, that's the, uh, the large project that we're using, the, uh, big chunk of the ARPA money to, to construct. And that will generally take us from Fifty-Ninth Avenue where, where Phase One B is all the way west to Sixty-Fifth Avenue. So it'll cover a large portion of the northern part of the city. Will serve about five hundred and fifty-five properties with that project. It's a pretty significant job. The budget on that job, I think I put it in here, is about four point, no, that's the wrong one. Where did I put the budget? Back page. About three-point-seven million on Phase Two, about six hundred thousand on Phase One B. So, you know, as I said, we'll be completing construction on Phase One B probably early two thousand and twenty-three, move into Phase Two. Phase Two will be a significant project on the order of twelve to eighteen months. Conservatively speaking, it'll probably be a year and a half. So we're looking at probably spring of two thousand and twenty-four to have everything completed and in the ground. And, and the nice thing about these projects is we'll essentially be done with the north side of the city, aside from some, some pockets on the extreme western part. And, but, you know, depending on how the bids come in and if we're able to do more, we'll do more. So, um, but it's exciting because we'll get, you know, the, the majority of the city's going to be, going to be done, and we'll really only have the southern, southern quadrant to finish. Also part of the ARPA package, we're looking at upgrading our stormwater pump stations. We're not necessarily upgrading, but replacing the pumps. These pumps were, were completed in the early two thousands. They've been operating now for close to twenty years, which is, you know, kind of the useful life of some of these pumps. So with the opportunity that we have now, kind of an unprecedented opportunity with the funds that we have available, we think it's a good idea to go ahead and expend the money now to upgrade and renew those pumps. So we have that in the pipeline for this year. We have not put together a bid package yet or anything on that, but we just have it, have it planned for this year, so we'll be coming back to you guys, you know, before the end of the year with, with a bid package to go out for the pumps. Next, we'll move on to the just citywide general drainage improvements. You know, the city, since the construction of the major drainage projects in the early two thousands, we've done pretty well in terms of flooding, but there's still issues. Things get old, uh, you know, development changes things, so we have to address that. And there was also pockets left over from those previous projects that we still haven't addressed. So as money, monies come in and become available, we try to, every few years, knock out a few streets and, and take care of pockets of, of flooding or pounding issues. So earlier this year, we were tasked with designing a few streets, uh, which are currently completed. We've completed design on, on three segments, and we're putting a bid package together. Again, hopefully have that ready to advertise this month. Um, excuse me. The projects consist of Sixty-Sixth Avenue, which is a segment between Fourteenth and Fifteenth Street, where it's, it's one of the few roads we have in the city which was really kind of left undeveloped. So we're going to go ahead and reconstruct that segment of the street, put a proper typical section for the road, put in proper drainage. We're actually going to extend the water main as part of that project as well. Once we're in there, you know, we know we got to fix these mains, so anytime we're touching these streets where water mains need to be improved, we're going to go ahead and, and do that if we could. So that's Sixty-Sixth Avenue.
That's where the new development of townhomes.
Yes, there was a couple of townhomes, that twin townhomes that went in at the end of the block there. As part of their project, they actually extend, they did a, a big job for us and extended one of our mains over to them, and we're just kind of finishing that extension out to, to Fifteenth Street. So that all, you know, that, that's really one of the last little pockets that is undeveloped, per se, the, the streets. The other two areas are kind of spot drainage fixes that we're, we're looking to alleviate some, some mid-block pounding issues. Southwest Sixteenth Terrace, there's been a recurring flooding issue there, kind of mid-block. The two ends of that street were actually addressed years ago. There's a little mid-block section there that, that's kind of suffered over the years, so we're going to go ahead and fix that. And then we have a small project on southwest Fourteenth Street, couple of, uh, old little French drains that are there that we're going to replace, that were installed fifty years ago maybe, so, so it's about time to replace them. And those, all these have, again, have been designed and they're ready to advertise. And then looking forward, we've done a little bit of planning in terms of what kind of the next needs are for drainage improvements, and we've identified a few pockets. Couple of small pockets on the extreme east of the city, on Ninth Street, Ninth Terrace, and Fifty-Eighth Court, where we had previously identified some drainage issues under the, the previous phases of drainage that we just never got to doing due to funding. So we're going to, we're going to look at bringing those in. Those will be just kind of spot drainage, French drains, mid-block, to alleviate just mid-block flooding and pounding. And then the big one that we're really looking at is Eleventh Street. Eleventh Street suffers from a pretty extreme low point here east of Sixty-Second Avenue between Sixtieth Court and Fifty-Ninth Avenue. The, the issue here is that it is quite low, so we have concerns that kind of the, the typical French drain systems may not work. They'll help, but they're not going to really alleviate the pounding there. So we'd really like to connect that low point over to one of our pump stations, and that will require a pretty significant project to, to basically run the pipe from all the way on, you know, Fifty-Ninth Avenue all the way over to Sixty-Third to connect it to one of our pump stations. So that pro-, that project in itself is about a million dollars, and then the other three streets combined is about a half a million dollars. So total kind of estimated budget for these projects is about one-point-five. So, you know, we'll work with, with the manager and, and Public Works to see how we move forward with those projects. Let me jump to the rec center, and then we'll go to the, the items that were on the agenda. So on the rec center, we were, we received bids in, not too long ago, from OAC Construction Corporation and Versetti Enterprises. We had an, you know, we had an apparent low bidder. We went through the process of, of confirming the bid, and I believe it was in which meeting? In the January meeting, we were instructed to negotiate with the low bidder and try to get the price down to the budget that the city had allocated for this project. We were successfully able to do that by value engineering a couple of things out of the project and removing one piece of the scope, and we got the budget down to where we needed it to be. So we are moving forward with that. That project was awarded, and they're ready to start. So the thing with this project, it is a design build, which means they have to go through the design, they're going to design and they're going to construct the project based off the conceptual designs that we provided and that they bid on. So design is starting now, so that will take some time. We're expecting construction to start probably in the fall with completion middle of two thousand and twenty-three. So if everything goes well with design, we don't have any issues, which we shouldn't, we'll get started on that in the fall, and, and it'll take about probably six to, six to nine months to construct. So look for that to begin soon. Let's jump over then back to the two items that were on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask something here?
Go ahead.
On the issue of the rec center. Will the demolition take place now, or you're going to wait until the, um, the entire job begins later on in the fall?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. Are they going to do that? I don't think we've had that discussion.
We have summer camp starting up, and we have, as of today, we have over two hundred and twenty applications for summer camp. So, I mean, we've waited this long. I would recommend that we wait until after summer camp. You know, kids are very inquisitive, and no matter how much you fence that area, there's, you know, usually debris, and so if you could wait until after summer camp, I think...
I think that's fine. I mean, we haven't seen their schedule, but they haven't really showed any intent to get out there and, and start demo. The demolition is not very time-consuming, so I think, uh...
It's a small, small project.
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem.
And that would be my recommendation.
Just work, just work with, um, I mean, as you, I'm sure would, yes.
Right, right.
On that, thank you.
But we have to close it. Yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
No, but that's a, that's a good question, yes, and definitely don't want to have construction going on over the summer if we can avoid it.
Thank you.
So going back to the, the two agenda items, I don't know, how do you want to do that, Madam Clerk?
Just, just, uh, to take E and F now out of order because you're up here already.
Yes, so let me read the two items. Item eleven E, report by the Office of City Engineer, AMI Engineering Reference to Speed Limit, uh, twenty-five miles per hour. This item is sponsored by Mayor Diaz-Padrón. Item F, report by the Office of the City Engineer, AMI Engineering Reference to Crosswalk Signs Aimed at Creating Awareness/Speed Reduction for Drivers. This item is sponsored by Commissioner Chavez.
All right, so let's talk about the speed limits first. So in the April commission meeting, we were directed to investigate and report back on the possibility and the process for changing the citywide speed limits to twenty-five miles an hour. So what we did, we initially engaged our traffic engineer. So as, as you know, we have two firms engaged as traffic engineers for, for the city. So we spoke to Caltrans, and we had them provide a proposal to basically do the study, what it, what it would take to get this approved through the county. In, in that preparation of the proposal, we also did reach out to the county. Caltrans reached out to them to investigate whether or not the data that we did on our previous traffic study would be applicable. So we did a study back in two thousand and eighteen where we did a complete citywide traffic study, and in that study, we did some, some speed counts to basically look at different speeds throughout the city, which is what's needed to do the justification for the speed limit down to twenty-five miles an hour. So we got some good news that the county concurred that the data we used in two thousand and eighteen would still be applicable, we wouldn't have to go back and get new counts. Of course, the county, so that could change once we go in front of them, but, but as of now, they concurred that what we did in two thousand and eighteen is still applicable today. So hopefully that doesn't change. In addition to that, we don't have it presented here, but we do have, you know, essentially the guidelines by which we need to put the signs throughout the city. So at the commission's request, we could put together a map, just kind of showing where all the signs we need to go, what the cost estimates are going to be for that, and, and whatnot, in order to get a complete picture of the project and decision to move forward. So that, that's kind of where we are with that. It's, it's, you know, as far as what we've heard from the county, it's, it's doable. I think with the data that we have, it's justifiable and should not be a very complicated procedure.
Okay, we'll work with the manager and, and yourself to put together something to present to the commission so we can...
Right.
Look at it, um, you know, all prepared.
Yes.
So, uh, next item on your report, I think, has to do with Commissioner Chavez's proposal.
Yes, so the next item is regarding the flashing crosswalk signs at the City Hall Crossing over here. When we designed this, uh, this crossing, I believe it was, uh, I can't remember dates anymore, fourteen? Yeah. So two thousand and fourteen, we, we designed this, and we had this permitted through the county. In the initial design, we actually did have these, and at the time, they, they were rejected by the county. They, they didn't, you know, this is their jurisdiction at the end of the day, so anything we do on there, uh, you know, they have to approve. Now, we do have an ILA with the county, an inter-local agreement regarding all traffic calming implementations that we've done throughout, and that does include this, this intersection. So we are, through that ILA, we are required to, to maintain and, and, and take care of that intersection. So, um, I've reached out to the county, I put together a formal email, just kind of documenting our request formally to them to determine whether or not they will allow us to, number one, whether or not they'll allow us to put the signs. Because things have changed, I mean, that was quite a while ago. These signs, I think, have become a lot more prevalent throughout the county, so perhaps their, their position on it has changed. So we're waiting to get some feedback from them, number one, if they're allowed, number two, if they are allowed, what's the process? Do we need some kind of study or something to justify their, their implementation? So we're still waiting to hear back on that.
As well as, sorry, as well as the design standards, correct?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, there's, you know, there's, uh, available signs out there in the market. I think there's a brochure that I included in the package, which is kind of one of the more typical ones that I've seen used, and that, and that, that really, the one that was in that brochure, yes, that one, that is the one that we had in our original, in our original design that we submitted to the county that was removed.
What was the reason it was rejected?
They, at the time, it just didn't allow it. It wasn't part of their standard, so they didn't allow it on their county roads. You know, they would allow it, you know, if you do it in your parking lot, or if you do it, uh, even on a local road, that would probably be fine, but on their county roads, they just, they just wouldn't allow it. I, I don't have an exact rejection from them. I looked back at our files. I couldn't determine an exact reason why. I just know it was on the plans, we submitted it, and then it was removed.
Because it, it does a similar function to the signage that's out there already, it's just more visible.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
The, the county will surprise you sometimes with the...
I mean, based on the research I did on that, they are, you know, they're MUTCD allowed, so the, the federal government has, has nothing, you know, the, the DOT doesn't have anything against them, they're, they're allowed to be put on, on roads.
So we're in hold, we're in a holding pattern now for them to respond to you?
Yeah, yeah, and I'll continue to ping them.
Right, and I, yeah, keep hitting them until they respond, and I'm sure immediately you'll, you'll follow up with Commissioner Chavez, and we can get, hopefully, this back on the agenda with some more information.
Yep.
I appreciate you getting back so quickly, too.
No, not a problem.
All righty, is that, is that all you for your report?
That's it. I think the only other item was the, the welcome signs, but that, there's a...
There's an agenda item?
Yeah, that one will take separately.
So we can take that separately. All right, I think that's it. Any other questions?
No.
Anyone have any questions? You can't go that long because then people, you know, I think it's a tactic.
It's fun, I don't mind, this is fun for me, so I don't mind answering questions.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
You keep doing your job, keep working.
Um, next item, please.
Item nine, committee report, report of the mayor.
So, um, a couple of things real quick. One, if I could get a resolution out of here, from a motion for resolution for recommendation for myself to be appointed to the Miami, to, sorry, to the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust Board of Trustees, is a requirement of the application. Hopefully, I'd, I'd be able to get on there and, and represent our city with our insurance carrier. So if I can get a motion on that.
A second.
A motion and a second. Can you call a roll on that?
Yes. Commissioner Suarez, I'll give you vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca? Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Four-zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next, I've been talking with the administration, with the manager and with Mr. Penna and Public Works, about the problem we have with the roots, with the roots from these trees that they uplift the sidewalks, and there's a lot of, obviously, the, the easiest solution is to replace the trees, but those are, that's very expensive to do all at once. So we've been looking for alternative solutions, and we're, we're going to come back with a few of them in the next, in the next meeting or two or three. But one of them I want to bring up now, I was having a conversation, this is over the last two weeks, with manager and Mr. Penna, and if you could just briefly explain what we want to do, maybe bring Mr. Penna up and to discuss the, the...
Sure.
Yeah, and explain it, and then bring Mr. Penna up to explain it, thank you.
Right, and, and the one thing we're looking at as a possibility is designated, one spot, one area where a sidewalk is being disturbed by these invasive roots, and that's pretty much the bottom line. So we talked about a, an asphalt alternative that they're now introducing pretty much throughout the state of Florida, based on a webinar that Mr. Penna and I attended with the University of, of Florida. And asphalt is black, and obviously, it's not that attractive as concrete, but they are, um, they're applying asphalt to some of these areas, and they're painting over it in white so that it blends in and it creates somewhat of a smooth, if you would, walkway area for sidewalks until we find a, for a permanent solution for these trees.
If, if Mr. Penn can come up to, and just explain briefly, what, you know, what we're trying to do, take one area, take one location, the benefits that it could provide and, and what, and why we're trying it instead of going and doing it all over.
Well, over time, the University of Florida has been studying locations of trees and the adverse effects to public utilities and public sidewalks in rightways. A lot of our trees, the major portion of our biggest tree... Uh, a lot of our trees, the major portion of our biggest trees, were planted to replace ficus trees that were very invasive back in the seventies and eighties. Uh, so we use, we planted black olives, but black olives is of the same family, they're very aggressive trees and they're very tall trees. So, the lit, the, the rightaway space that we have is very restricted, plus they were planted not in the center of the rightway, but more towards the sidewalk end of the rightway. So you have a lot of trees that have grown over the years and they have, uh, what's called root gird, uh, curling, which the roots come out of the ground and they just start curling around the tree. Uh, this creates, uh, unhealthy, uh, health for the tree. And during storms, we can lose them and they could just topple over. In the past, just to allow us to put the, uh, sidewalks back in, we would come in and root prune the tree, but, uh, studies have shown that that is more damaging to the tree than it is beneficial to the sidewalk. So, they have, uh, now looked at, uh, different types of, uh, sidewalk, uh, bridging, like, uh, actually raising a bridge over the root system and putting, uh, some type of movable bridge over it, or the asphalt that the mayor explained, and coloring it to match the existing sidewalks. Those are all temporary repairs to allow the tree to, uh, stay stable and healthy and gives us a chance to plan to replace that tree with a more proper tree for the speed, uh, area, that's it.
The real concern, um, because we know, we know asphalt will slope over the, the root and if it's done correctly, it is ADA compliant, cause it slopes over. The real concern is when it comes to aesthetics, um, you know, where, you know, and one of the reasons we want to try it with a resident who is willing to let us try it, is to see how the paint will look and how long it, it will, it will last. And so, so Mr. Penno and the manager will be scouting out for that resident who wants to be the guinea pig. I'm sure there will be a few. I guess Commissioner Blanca wants to be the guinea pig.
Yeah.
And, uh, and hopefully that's a one part, I mean, it's not a long-term solution, but it's, it's, it's one part of the strategy to mitigate some of these root issues. So hopefully that is successful. Thank you.
And you can take like three out of
Well, that's, that's it, that's every discussion that's gonna be coming soon. I know. Uh, real quick, uh, well, I just want to report, we, me and Mr. Penna actually visited the Goodwill Industries today, and, um, it was a really impressive, very impressive, uh, organization. Uh, hopefully, I, I will look forward to somehow doing stuff with them because the, the role they're playing in vocational training and jobs and our community for people with disabilities is just absurd.
Just to add to the matter
Yeah, please.
Actually, Lieutenant Valencia was wearing the uniform that they were making there today. And I explained that to him, and he was amazed, cause he didn't really realize that locally those uniforms are being made
It's incredible.
For the US Army.
It's incredible, I mean, it's, it was just, it was, I mean, you were there, we were both in shock. Commissioner Chavez, um, if you can report just real briefly, I know you had a cool experience today as well in Salvania on a, on a project you worked on.
Absolutely, so I want to highlight a, a resident. He's a lifelong resident here, he grew up here at the rec center and went to Salvania Heights. He's actually the younger brother of John Michael, who was here earlier. He has a, a clothing brand or a lifestyle brand, and with that, he's met a lot of people and he's done a lot of, uh, events that he gets back to the community. So he reached out to me that he wanted to go back to Salvania, which is the school that we all began at, right here in our own city of West Miami. And, uh, we went this morning, he had a lot of clothing and shoes, basketballs, bags, bottles, um, a lot of items that he wanted to give back to the kids, and it was even more so than just giving them items. It was an experience, um, it gave the kids an opportunity to see two people that were in their seats many years ago, and how we grew up and, you know, became something of, of ourselves. So, his brand is, not to give him a shout out, but I like the phrase, it's called, "Don't settle, be great." So, just basically let the kids know not to settle and to be great, and then, once you become great, always remember who helped you along the way and go back to your elementary school and give it back. So, it was a great experience, we had a great time, and I wanted to give him a shout out because he, he's doing a lot of great things and he plans on doing a lot more for our community as well, so.
We should get the pictures that I saw from Salvania's social media, uh, for ours. They were, they looked really, uh, the kids looked like they were having a good time.
It was an awesome time.
Um, with that, let's get into the new business. Oh, abs, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just, just to piggyback on Madam Manager's, uh, comments earlier on the 75th anniversary, there was discussion about, once again, about the food truck versus the hot dogs. Uh, logistically, it's not going to be possible to have food trucks in the park right now with construction and stuff like that, so we are just going to stick with the hot dogs for this event.
And watermelon.
And the watermelon, for Commissioner Blanca, please.
And, uh, we contracted, um, uh, cotton candy, ice cones and, uh, popcorn.
It's gonna be a great event regardless.
Beautiful, beautiful. Anything else? Any committee report? Nope, alright. Um, Madam Clerk, please, next item.
Item 10, unfinished business, non this evening. Item 11, under new business agenda items, item 11A, this is a second reading, a public hearing, an ordinance of the mayor and the city commission of the city of West Miami repealing and replacing chapter four, animals unfouled, article two, section 419, permitting dogs to defecate or urinate prohibited, amending language including assessment of fine to owners of dogs in violation of this section, providing for conflict correction, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. And this, uh, public hearing was advertised in, uh, following statutory requirements.
Alright, so we'll open the public hearing?
Yes.
Public hearing is now open? Anyone for public hearing? Seeing none. Public hearing is closed, can you read the ordinance so we can talk about it?
Yes, we just read the ordinance.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, you read the title.
It's the second
You know, I'm, I'm still getting, I'm still getting used to that part, I, I totally dismissed when you're reading the ordinance as I'm thinking about the public hearing. Um, this is, uh, this is my item. We've discussed it, a couple months ago, we brought it back now. This basically just replaces the language of the current, um, dog, uh, defecation ordinance. The current ordinance is complex and it, and it allows for a nuisance, so even if a code enforcement officer saw it, they, they couldn't even put a fine, there's no sign, a fine attached to it, they would have to bring it, I guess, to a nuisance abatement board, which is us. So, this, uh, just very, very cleanly sets aside the language, and it creates a violation fine that we can post on, on signage as well, um, of a hundred dollars for, for a, for a violation and two hundred dollars for a second violation. So with that, if anyone has any questions, um, questions or a motion?
The signage that you were discussing, Mr. Mayor, what are the locations for that? It's gonna be
That would be, that, that's not in the ordinance, that would be, uh, separate, um, by administration working on, on that, um, either, either by us presenting it or, or brought by them. So, so we can, now, on this, I know, uh, prior to you being commissioner, prior to you being, uh, considered for the commission, we had discussions, uh, before sunshine, on, uh, on, uh, making, making laws that, that would, uh, pertain to department buildings. Um, so, I was talking with Mr. Penna and the manager to, uh, this week, and this amendment, this ordinance will be amended, whether it's by, uh, a proposal for myself or Commissioner Chavez. This amendment, I think, I think this ordinance will be amended at a later time to include some more enforcement on department buildings, where mo, not all the problem, but a big centralized portion of the dog defecation problem is coming from. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Suarez first and then
Listen, this, it's not a question, it's, you try to be more explicit.
Right.
And I think it's correct, because when it's a cloud, always is a problem.
Yeah, we don't want gray areas.
If you make explicit words, that would be easier to
Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Uh, thank you, I think for now, um, in the residential area, we should create a flyer, a form of a flyer, and, uh, have code enforcement go, you know, to, when they see people out with their animals, make them aware. If you educate people and they're already informed, they can make a decision on whether they're going to pick up after their dogs or not.
Absolutely, and I want, I want the information to include a, a violation fine.
Right.
So, uh, with that, can I
So we will start doing that awareness campaign on our end.
Thank you. Can I get a motion on this item?
Second.
Motion and a second? Um, can you call a rule?
Yes, okay, motion by Commissioner Blanca and second, we had two seconds, who's
Well, get the young
Who wants to be the second?
Get the millennium second.
Okay, by Commissioner Chavez. Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Yes, item, uh, 11B, this is a tabulation report of entrance signs project by city clerk, and the report is that on May 4th, 2022, at 2:00 PM through Demandstar, the Welcome to West Miami Entrance Signs Project bids were opened, two bids were received, one, number one, uh, from Southeastern Lighting Solutions in the amount of $78,960, and the second one from Valentino's Painting Signs Corp, Corporation, in the amount of $43,550. That's the tabulation report, and we have a resolution.
So, yeah, if you can report on this, uh, number one, whether the amounts are within norm, um, et cetera.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mr. Penna, I believe has spoken to both of the, uh, contractors. We are, um, we are satisfied with, with the low bidder, uh, based on our discussions with them and, and what they submitted. So this is for all five locations, so it came in, uh, actually lower than what we had budgeted.
When you say this is to the forty, what was it, forty-eight thousand, right, correct?
Yes, the forty-three.
Forty-three.
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three, five fifty.
Yeah. That is for all five locations, you mean, in, in total?
Mm-hmm.
So it's, okay, and the five locations are 57th and 8th?
So we got, yes, 57th and 8th, um, the two on Salvania, and, uh, the one out here on 62nd and another one on Coraway.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, by, by, if we were to approve this, uh, resolution, um, is this the end of this project, or does this go to another vote, Madam Manager?
This would be, the, the approval would, would constitute us to issue a notice to proceed to the responsive bidder. I don't know whether the low bidder or not would be the recommendation in this case.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing the lowest bidder is the recommendation.
Is, it is Valentino, right?
No, uh, is, no.
No, it was the first one?
Oh, Valentino, yes, Valentino.
Yes.
And I, and I only ask because I know this is the baby of the Vice Mayor.
Correct.
Um, and while I don't want to stop his, his progress, I also don't want to step on his toes on his, so is
You'd, you should announce her that I would be the lowest responsive responsible bidder.
Right.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The lowest responsive responsible bidder.
Got it. So Madam Manager, again, will it, will this come back before?
Well
Was it, I mean, I'm not saying we, we bring it back before on purpose, it was it, would it, would it have to come back?
It, what needs to be discussed is the funding for these street signs, because even if at forty-five thousand and change, what the, what the engineer is reporting right now, we only have a budget of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and seven dollars.
Right.
So the balance of that would need to come from reserves to get the project started.
So again, what, so are we locking in by, by, by approving this, uh, this resolution?
This would give us the green light to start the project, and I think that, um, I don't want to speak for Vice Mayor Blanis, and everybody knows that this has been something that he's been, um, I don't want to call it lobbying, but trying to implement for years.
Yes.
And so I wouldn't want to, you know, after I thought about it, I don't think we should delay it, I think that he will be very happy to know that this project was approved, provided that you approve another thirty-five thousand dollars from, um, I'm sorry, it's forty-five thousand, twenty thousand.
It's forty-three, so we're at twenty-five budgeted, so
Twenty thousand dollars to proceed with this project. How many welcome signs would that, if I may? Five of them, okay, excellent.
Okay, um, alright, any discussion on the table?
I mean, from the renderings, it looks beautiful, so where would the single posts go?
That's the one here on 62nd.
Right here, and the rest will be
The rest will be the monuments, yeah.
Is it great?
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Do we have, uh, a motion either way?
We need to read the resolution.
Hold on, hold on, I, 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 I need a parliamentarian, Gandhi, you're off your game today.
Yes.
Please read the resolution.
Yes. Item 11C, a resolution of the city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida, accepting the recommendation of the city manager, which is attached as exhibit A to award RFP number 20220504, city of West Miami entrance signs, to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Valentino's Painting Signs Corp. Uh, RFP number 20220504 shall be funded by account number 529605, non-department, and balance, uh, the balance from reserves. The balance of twenty thousand dollars from the city of West Miami, reserve account 529440. Okay, 529440, providing for an effective date.
Alright.
Make a motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, please call a rule.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Uh, just for the record, uh, you have to wait until 10 days after the, uh, commission votes in order to afford, uh, a period of, uh, any, uh, bid protest, okay?
Absolutely, thank you.
So, the resolution cannot pass, uh, immediately?
No, the resolution passed, but they have 10 days in which to, uh, uh, challenge that in a
Right, but that's, that's out of statute, right? I mean, that's a, that's a bid protest.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nothing, that's nothing new.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Yes, item 11D, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Vermeer Southeast for the repair to a stump grinder in the amount of eleven thousand, nine hundred, twenty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents, as described in the invoice attached at, as exhibit A, instructing the city manager to provide payment of eleven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents to Vermeer Southeast for repairs to the stump grinder. Funds for such repair are to be made from general fund reserve account, providing for effective date.
Go ahead. We have stumps out there ready to grind.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, this machine broke down, uh, I believe it was sometime in February, and we've waited since because of the, uh, use of the machine used for root pruning and also for removal of stumps. But we still need the machine back, this machine is not made any longer, but is still repairable with the company that built the machine. And, uh, it requires, uh, eleven thousand dollars worth of work to put it back in a safe operating condition.
And as we discussed, the machine is already at the shop, we just need to send it with money.
To approve the work.
Alright, does anyone have any questions, concerns, comments, or motions?
And we recommend the, um, we recommend
Who's the best price you found, huh?
They are the equipment manufacturer, I won't trust the machine to anybody else.
Motion.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, then I heard a recommendation from the manager, so with that, uh, please, uh, call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Blanca, how do you vote? Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Thank you.
And next item will be item G. Discussion on mitigating potential cost of the upcoming hurricane season by Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Madam Manager, I know we discussed, so please take it away.
Basically, I would need a motion or a resolution by the city commission, authorizing our office to go out and secure a contractor, and obviously, look at pricing for debris removal in the event that we're hit with a storm, so that we could be ready to go.
Right. So just briefly, to explain, we're, as we all know, when a storm comes afterwards, everyone's going crazy, and that's when we get slammed with the price. So there are a bunch of contractors who will come and contract with us beforehand. And if a storm comes, we have a locked-in price, ready to go, debris removal, no crazy special meetings, and without power. And if a storm does not come, we are not on the hook for any money.
Exactly. I remember Andrew. Yes, I make a motion.
So, yeah, so that's a motion for a resolution to authorize the manager to, go ahead.
I want to clarify.
Of course.
What you present here is the... Potential cost of the upcoming, like I said. One moment. It's G, right?
Yeah, so it doesn't say it there.
This is...
So it doesn't have the resolution there, so...
Your idea is to have some kind of contact with some kind of contractor. Now, I understand we have a list of the contractors, right?
Madam Manager?
There is one list that's available to all municipalities that's published by the League of Cities. But there's also local contractors who may want to participate in the RFP.
In that list, in this case, upcoming hurricane, our calculations of the possibilities to get the best contractor is based of the experience they have in the past, or just, because sometimes a new contractor for a hurricane, he never saw a hurricane before.
Right, and that's why you put...
And that's why we have to be careful.
Right.
Not because they have the license of general contractor. It's what we need. That's my question.
There are several criteria that they will need to meet. Number one, their experience. Number two, they need to have a specialized license to dump the debris.
My second question is, we just approving the concept. We are not approving any contract now.
So what I'd like, and let me know if you agree with this, what I'd like to see, because as you're aware, there's, I think there's already another, there's already a storm brewing out there. I don't think it's going to be impacting for us, but hurricanes has already begun. What I'd like to see is for the manager to come back with a contract that we have to approve, right? But we have to approve, but I'd like to see her...
You bring a list, and then we check. Now, okay.
If we can do that for next meeting, bring a list, make negotiations, whatever.
For next meeting, there may not be enough time between now and next meeting.
Try.
We'll do our best.
Yeah, do your best, because we're obviously, we're going to be in the thick of it soon, and...
Yeah, it's clear enough. You bring the list, and then we analyze who is who.
I know there's constraints, but if it's possible, if it's not, listen, we can't do the impossible. But if it's possible, for next meeting.
Is, and if I may, may I ask a question to Mr. Penna? Is there, we can provide a list, but there's a time for the publication of the specification and contract documents? And then you have to give the contractor time to respond to the bid?
Right. Now, I've been told in the past, I've been advised in the past, that you, on this sort of contract, you may not need to go to bid. Is that, is that something that, because I've had, you know, prior, my prior non-public life, I've dealt with these companies before, and they seem to suggest that they don't, they haven't had to go through bid processes.
You have to go realize that there's an emergency issue whenever you have a hurricane. So you cannot wait until publication and the bid process and all of that. So in essence, if you do have an emergency, the commission can advise the administration to waive competitive bidding, due to the fact that this would assist the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens.
Yeah, and the issue with this emergency is, when it would become a state of emergency, it's too late, because at that point, you're in the hole that you're trying to avoid.
This is why you should do it now.
Right. So I think, I think you've, you got the legal marching orders there. And then we'll bring it back for the final ratification approval.
Okay, now we're clear. We're clearing.
All righty. Do we still need a resolution on that point? Do we send a resolution authorizing this manager to do anything at this point?
You know, we're a bunch of caution. You should have a resolution doing that.
Okay. Can I get a motion to authorize the manager to seek out these contractors? We have a motion. We have a second. Please call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Yes, item H. This is the last item, discussion in reference to planting of a pine brockland garden by Mayor Diaz-Padron.
Madam Manager and Mr. Penna, take it away.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we participated in a meeting with Daniela, Daniela, and I forget her last name now.
Fairchild Gardens.
Fairchild Gardens, there you go, and Evelyn, Jonah Evelyn, who is a City of West Miami resident about finding a piece of city property or an area that considered for a pine brockland garden. It's basically a place where planting of native plants would take place. And obviously, these native plants require very little maintenance. And so Fairchild is reaching out to the local municipalities to see if there is a possibility for a joint partnership to participate in what they call the Connect to Protect Network. Daniela is the program manager for that program. And so they have met with us, they visited Cooper Park, and we will need about an area of 840 feet. And I know we discussed location for this, and we agreed that the westernmost area of Cooper Park would be a good place for the planting of the trees.
So before Mr. Penna goes into that, the concept is that the Fairchild Gardens will source and acquire the plants themselves?
Exactly.
They'll put together volunteers with us, with them, people who are part of the community, to actually plant them. The only resources city would be, would be expending would be on scraping the soil, which Mr. Penna will talk about in a second, and in, and the actual location, which Mr. Penna will go over now as well. So take it away.
The area that we suggest to have the, it's 840 square feet, is the area behind the mound that's on the northeast, northwest corner of the Southwest 15th Street. An area there of 840 square feet would be ideal for this pineland park. And at the same time, we have a trail that walks through there, so people will be able to oversee what we've done as a part of the improvements. The requirement for us to strip the soil and the land so that they could do their planting, we have no problem with that. We have the equipment to do that for them.
Beautiful. I know that the Fairchild wanted a portion of the park that was, that interfered with recreational area, which obviously, we are not willing to do. But if they are, if they, if they accept that portion that we, that the administration is talking about, which is outside of, the other side of the crosswalk, so it's on the corner, so it doesn't, there's no recreation. People don't walk there and go through there themselves, then I think it would be a really excellent thing for our city. And as part of that project, it would include butterfly, butterfly plants and...
You like it?
Yes.
She likes it, you like it?
She's talking herself. She like it.
So if we give the blessing okay, we'll start working with Fairchild to them. They can, they can start, well, they have to see if they like our new idea first. And then hopefully, we can start working with them over the summer to get this done and do a nice little ribbon cutting.
You think this is going to bring butterflies in this?
They say it's going to bring butterflies.
That could be the best thing you have.
Yes. They have, they had a partnership, I know we were discussing it today, with AD Barnes. And they did, they do have a fairly large butterfly garden at AD Barnes.
That's the best idea.
And also, to, right next door at Salvania, they are also working on Salvania's Science Magnet Program. And they're going to go on the front, so on the side that's in the street, they're going to do a similar showcase garden. So the both would hopefully provide, you know, if one's providing butterflies, the other's providing butterflies, there's double the butterflies.
Good, good.
So...
I like it.
Is this going to be enclosed?
This will be, it will be, it won't be enclosed by a gate. It would be have either artificial or natural demarcation, so with the bricks or logs, just so that it's demarcated that it's a garden area, but it's not going to be, it's not going to be fenced.
Right.
It's, you know, the idea is that people will actually be able to walk through it in the middle.
And see the butterfly.
Yeah, and see the butterflies. And Candy will be out there all day. So we don't need a vote on this. This is just a blessing. So if we're all, we're all on board, we'll start, we'll start working with them.
So great with me.
Beautiful. And next item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item 12, consent agenda items, non. Item 13, good of the order.
Last thing, I promise, if I can get a blessing for our proclamation to resident, a resident of the city, Diana Mendez, who actually today was being installed as the president of the Miami-Dade Florida Association of Women Lawyers. And I'd like to present her proclamation on behalf of the commission at our next meeting.
Of course.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have anything else for good of the order?
No.
Seeing none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to mention that the first organization in Florida, legal organization in Florida, joined forces with the Florida Association of Lawyers with the Cuban American Association.
Very good history. Thank you.
On my command.
Of course. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Meeting adjourned.
Good night.